Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Welcome to the public to the Town Council Workshop of 18 July 2012. We'll start as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. We'll start with the -- let's hear Bentley.
I just wanted to say our thoughts were with Sue Boyer, Tito Boyer, longtime fire chief and lifelong resident of Newmarket, passed away, and I want to send our condolences out to the family. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Zink?
Given that Counselor LaBranche's light doesn't work, I'm going to be lighting for him.
Okay. Try now. There you go.
Motion to seal the non-public minutes.
Second. Motion to seal, second discussion. Seeing none. Chief, did you call the roll call?
Counselor Wright?
Here.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Counselor LaBranche?
Aye.
Counselor Zink?
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Zell?
Seven to zero. The here was an aye.
Yes.
Seven to zero. Next item will be approval of minutes of our July 11 business meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 11, 2012 minutes.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing no discussion.
Chief, vote. Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Counselor LaBranche?
Aye.
Counselor Zink?
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Zell?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Real quick shift, we are going to have the Fox Hollow Road discussion right after the road paving discussion. I know there's several people here to have that conversation and they'll put the DPW directors, things run in a row. Any councilor have an issue with that?
No.
Also, for people that are waiting to hear the second reading of the McIntosh Well, because it has to be posted five business days, because we had the first reading last Wednesday, there wasn't time to get the next posting up, so the second reading will occur at our -- for that and the Blackberry Tiff at our next scheduled meeting. With that, Mike Malaski, road paving.
Tim Harmon is also here tonight. He worked on revamping this budget a little bit. Sorry you just got it five minutes ago, but -- yes, I did, Tim. I printed it out and there's a -- there's the budget that's the existing budget, obviously, of the 124, 635, and the current budget. There's also a budget on page two of $175,756, and the third budget would be 252, 771, with the list of roads and the types of work that would be done to those roads. And there's lots of funds available in that fund, the transportation fund, as we talked about dipping into that, there's 342, 331 available. So myself and Tim could answer your questions if you have any questions on the proposed roads and...
Counselor LaBranche.
Rick, okay, so I assume first page is where you mentioned the 124, that's what we currently have budgeted?
In the budget, that's correct.
Okay. And then you would utilize approximately $50,000 to do the second page, which is your option?
That's correct.
My question to you is, well, we've already budgeted this, and without dipping into the fund this year, potentially setting ourselves up that we can do something for the following year's budget, can you live with the 124, 635? And will that also allow us to get on track?
It'll address the roads that have been sitting with binder if we just do the 125. So that will address my concerns with some roads that are sitting out there that haven't been touched with the finished course of pavement.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Levy?
So, right now, on page one, year one, is what we're doing. If we go to page two and change it to 175, we're basically adding $50,000, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And since we just got it, Rick, could you just really quickly synopsize the differences? What -- where's the extra 50 grand? Can you just really, so I don't have to try to go over each line?
If you don't mind.
What are you doing for the extra 50?
If I could have Tim address that, because he adjusted the plan?
Right.
And I just got this too, so I'm...
Super.
I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll have Tim address that.
Yeah, basically, the 125, we were just looking to show you guys what you're paying, what you would pay if you continued on the same budget you have now. And main thing, as Rick said, was just get the ones that need to get done, done. And then in the 175 budget, we just looked at some more maintenance that would prevent some money getting spent down the road. I actually have some more detailed budgets for like 10-year forecasts on each, if you want those. But basically, what the difference is, is you spend $50,000 more, and then in years three and four, so like 2015, 2016, you end up spending like 50 grand less each year. So you just -- the main differences are just going to be a little bit more maintenance, some overlay, and one more shim.
Just one follow-up?
You go ahead.
Well, actually, now that I'm looking at it, it looks like you added Shandor Drive for $35,000. Did I miss something? All I was asking was what's -- where'd you spend the extra 50?
Okay.
It looks like Shandor Drive.
Yeah, the thing is, it's not -- we didn't just add...
They took away Bay Road.
We took stuff away, too.
Shift things around.
Okay.
We had to, yeah, switch it around and make it work for 175.
Now, wait a minute. Shandor was 35. What else changed? Bay Road changed.
Bay Road changed, Bennett Road.
We added Lady Slipper. There's a couple changes there.
Okay. Any reason we -- I'm just asking, why'd we take out Bay Road for six grand?
Let's get other councilors to ask their questions. Counselor Zink?
Somebody asked you the question, I can't remember who it was. I'm beginning to forget. But you said if we spend a certain amount now, we're going to avoid paying a certain amount later. Can you repeat that again, please?
Yeah, actually, I'll just... Sorry, I should have communicated with Rick, but...
That seems pretty enticing. Oh, I don't need the...
Well, yeah, these just show you kind of like year to year, but they're two different ones, so I can just show you here. Sorry.
Can all councilors get that?
Yep. I'll just pass them around now.
Thanks.
So the first one in the back, it is the 125 budget, and then 175, and there's a 250 budget.
If I could, just let me restate my question, because I don't... If we were where I was, if we spend the additional $50,000...
Yep.
I think you said it's going to save us X dollars in the long term.
Yeah, so if we end up spending $50,000 more in 2013, you can just go down, and then you end up spending -- you save $20,000 in 2016, $40,000 in 2017, $15,000 in 2018, and then you're back at about the same amount in 2019, and then out from there.
Okay. And I would ask the same question on 252. Can you show us this?
Sure. So if you -- you're asking comparison to what we do now?
Yep.
Okay. So, yeah, year 2014, you end up spending $40,000 more in 2014, $30,000 more in 2015, $30,000 more in 2016 or so, $25,000 more in 2017, $15,000 in 2018, it goes on. So basically, the idea is you spend more on maintenance now, and then there's less more expensive problems later.
If I could just chime in, I think in about eight years, the budget would be consistent close to around $200,000.
Yeah.
The 190, $200,000 range. I'm not so sure which -- whether it's the 252, or 175, or 125, what the years are.
Right.
But it's about eight years out on this plan that we could budget a consistent number, and our roads would maintain a good life.
Yeah.
If that helps.
That's what I was trying to get to. So if we were to spend -- just one more. If we were to spend -- if we were to spend 252 instead of 124...
Sure.
How would that increase our ability to get to that level payment in years?
It doesn't change the years, Tim. Because roughly, it's about eight years out.
Right. Yeah, you end up -- you end up, basically, the higher cost years, 2014 to 2019, all these budgets, that covers reclaiming a lot of the roads that have just degraded too far. And then, once you're down at 2020, eight years out, you're only spending money on maintenance, for the most part. So that's what spending more money now does is makes it less of a burden each year, each of the coming years, to reclaim roads.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, any other councilors have questions?
I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
So in the second year, on the first page, it's going to be $458,000, correct?
Yep.
So we have $342,000 in the transportation fund, and we're approximately, correct?
Yes.
And we're probably, what's getting put into that, about $45,000 a year?
Probably.
So basically, on the second year, we'd only have $45,000 in there. Plus or...
That would depend on what your decision is, as to what -- how you're going to budget it, you're going to dip into that fund.
I'm just, you know, where's this money going to come from?
The municipal transportation fund?
Yeah. I guess, Mike, if we do the 458, $100,000, what are we going to have left in our transportation fund? We're technically, we're putting about $120,000 for road paving, right?
That's what we've been currently budgeting.
Budgeting.
It's anticipated, now that we have this plan, we would budget, follow the plan, to get caught up and get back on track. So that would either -- that would be in my budget, per se.
Right.
We would -- the only purpose for the fund this year would be to maybe help offset and catch up a little bit, a little sooner than we just do the 125 and wait, and next year have a big increase. We spread a little out, you know, I mean, we have some options, but it would basically be in my budget, Counselor Wright, if we were to follow the plan.
So basically, going the second year, there'd be no money left in the transportation fund, correct?
What he said, what I think what Rick just said, let me make sure this is correct, that right now, we would, because we only budgeted $124,000, $125,000 this year, he's looking to go into the municipal transportation fund for a portion of money in order to get us ahead of the curve on, or get us not even ahead of the curve, caught up to the wave that's already passed us on the curve on road paving, but that next year, he would look for that money to be out of his operating budget, not out of the municipal transportation fund.
That's correct.
He'd be requesting it based on this study, as opposed to based on what it has been up to this point, which has been Kentucky windage, for lack of a better term. And just quickly, what'll the third year be? Let's say just for the, on the second page, total third year? It's in this folder here. That's all I -- all right. It goes out to...
Oh, yeah, continue, sorry. Saving paper.
Excuse me?
Yeah. Oh, I just said it continues, I was trying to save paper, so...
While you're looking at that, Counselor LaBranche?
I think I stated at the last meeting that in previous years, prior years, probably four years back, we were budgeting $340,000, $350,000 a year for road paving. And Mr. Malaski stated that, of course, that's been the thing that they've, that the Town Council and the Budget Committee has hacked away at. I think it's hard to -- it's hard for me to not agree with a $340,000 or $350,000 road maintenance program if we, in fact, have a plan, which we do have, which we didn't have. So it was, in my opinion, it was, we'll do what we've got the money for, what's budgeted, and that's how we'll do it. We now have a plan that realistically, in seven years, will get us to a $341,000 or less even, as we go on. So looking at this, I'm hesitant to change anything in this year's budget, only because that's what we voted on, but I think a strong message should be sent to the council, to and to the Budget Committee, that, you know, we need to maintain the roads, we need to put that $340,000, $350,000 in, and next year, if we need to supplement it with the municipal fund, to get to that 458, or whatever the number is that we're looking at next year, that's how we do it. But, you know, the key change here is we have a plan. We have a 10-year vision, and, you know, that will be updated over a period of time.
We usually, sorry, I interrupted. We usually recommend every two years, we redo and just take a look at where the roads are and reevaluate, so...
So, you know, I mean, I support this plan, I support page, you know, the first part more than I do anything else, because I think it stays within this year's budget. And as a council, we have to sell it to the Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee and us have to sell it to the taxpayer. This is what we're using this money for. You know, you can go and look at budgets three, four years ago, and you can see the dollars that were put in paving. And now, when you're taking a third of that on a yearly basis and trying to maintain the roads, and new roads are coming up, something's going to crack someplace, so...
Lights on, but I think everyone who has a light on has had an opportunity to talk, so I was going to say something real quick. One, thank you, absolutely thank you for giving us a 10-year plan and working with us, with the DPW, to get us to a place, because we totally agree that we need to, like, the best, with the best intentions, we've been aiming at what roads we think need help, but I think having a 10-year plan provides us at least some purpose and direction around what is, what I think, one of the most fundamental things a municipality does, which is maintain our roads. So, that being said, looking at your comparison over 10 years, the math I just did gives me about $100,000 savings over five years if we go to the 175 this year, and about $140,000 savings if we go to the 250 this year. Does that sound about right?
It's probably about right, yes.
So, to me, where I'm coming from, understanding we put in about $45,000 in the municipal transportation fund a year, I'd be willing to dip in one time to bring us up to 175 this year, knowing that that's going to end up saving us $50,000 over five years. Whereas, to me, dipping in over $100,000 not only depletes it at a rate significantly faster than it's being filled, but also doesn't really give us as much bang for our bucks in the out years. It doesn't, going in over double, does not over double the savings over the years. It actually, you see reduced returns as we go out into the out years from that, so... The 175 seems to make sense to me, but that's my perspective. Counselor Levy?
Just two comments. It looks like we added, just so I want to make sure I got my facts right, we added Lady Slipper for 23, and Shandor for 35 and change, and then we took out Bay Road for 6,000. Okay, so that brings us up to 175. I don't know, you know, how important it is to fill and seal the cracks on Bay Road as far as, you know, long-term erosion or whatnot, but that aside, it seems like we're getting rid of something that's fairly short money, so I'm the last guy that wants to increase the budget, but it just seems to me that, I don't know why we're taking that out unless filling and sealing cracks is not important. That's just that. And just so we're crystal clear, from 2014 through 2019, but basically 19, we're going to blend it out average over 400 grand a year. So I guess my only question is, where's this money coming from? You know, the tax rate, just to finish, the tax rate went up $3 and change last year, and the transportation fund has 342 in it now. I'm assuming we're going to take about 50 or so out of that when we get, if we go to this second page. So that'll have under $300,000 in it. I just don't know where the money's coming from.
The conversation that we just had stated that it would have to come out of the operating budget?
At which point it falls in the council to make the, and then the Budget Committee to have that conversation. Counselor Zink?
I agree on your analysis, too. I mean, I think it's, I think it's pretty straightforward, that if we can realize those kinds of savings, short-term, we ought to do it. I guess my question, Rick, is, you've got $300,000 in this municipal account, what is it there for? Is it a de facto CIP, or is it an emergency account? What it, in other words, if it's just going to sit there and accumulate a percent and a half interest a year, I think that kind of changes my thought process as to what this is all about.
Back in the, back when it was initially started, the purpose, this is my memory of it, was basically for taking care of the roads. But there's an RSA that states what this fund is, when they, and it has sidewalks, parking lots. Forgive me, I don't have a copy of the RSA with me tonight, but we used it to do the emergency lights for the fire department coming out on the 108. We took $115,000 out of that fund back in '05, installed those lights. One other time, I believe, they used it for the parking lot out back here, if my memory serves me correct. So it can be used for parking lots, sidewalks, possibly bridges, paving roads, and so forth. And that was the purpose, but its main purpose was taking care of the roads. But they just followed the RSA, which opened it up to some other entities. And it's just kind of, the money goes in every year, and we haven't dipped into it since, I think, '07.
So, just as a follow-up, you're not going to come to us in a year and say, whoops, we need... We took money out of that municipal fund that we would have needed to do something you can forecast?
Yeah, there's nothing, I have no plans. I do know that Diane Hardy...
Skybridge.
With the Skybridge, is anticipating taking $7,000 to $9,000 out of that for the Skybridge project.
Right.
But aside from that, I have no, I have no plans of anything scheduled to take out of this fund on my half. As far as I know, it's just the Skybridge.
Okay, thank you.
And it's seven to...
Counselor Wright?
I just, you know, I think this is a great 10-year plan, but I just don't see where the money's going to come from. That's all I have to say.
For this year or for the 10-year?
For the 10-year.
It is expensive to maintain a town.
You know, just a comment on that, this has been around for quite a while, and when you started it, it was $5. The good thing with this is that it's not just the taxpayers, it's everyone that registers a vehicle in the town of Newmarket contributes to help pay, to take care of the roads or these types of things, you know? Maybe it's time to evaluate that and increase the, maybe you make a $10 per vehicle or something. I mean, it's been around for quite a while, and that would, you know, if you're putting 45 to 50, and, you know, you could be putting 100 a year, and instead of raising it through the taxes, maybe every year, if you get it up to 100, you dip into that and take 100, put it towards the roads, and it's not whacking all the taxpayers, it's everybody, everyone that rents, everyone's contributing.
Good thought.
Maybe time to evaluate that.
No, that's a good, that's a good thought.
So, I know we usually don't, go ahead.
Can I just add one little comment to jump on with what Mike's comments were? I did make this very clear to the council and the Budget Committee, that we would anticipate dipping into this to help offset the budget this year back through the process. And it's even, I think, in the budget notes, it's written right in there, so I just wanted to, I'm pretty sure everybody was made well aware of that, so I'll just...
So now it's a process question. To remove money from the municipal transportation fund requires, I'm sure, a vote of the council? I know we usually don't take votes at workshops, but I'd be willing to entertain a motion if someone was willing to make it.
Even if you didn't want to do that tonight, as long as I knew that you were going to do that, I can get the process moving if you want to follow the protocols.
Okay. I'm fine with move, continuing just to have votes in the business meeting if at all possible. Temperature of the council?
How much money are we going to be taking?
Would be $50,000 is the one that we're talking about right now. Does anyone have, want to take $100,000 out of there?
No, I just, the only thing I, is there, are we being penny wise and pound foolish on not doing the 6,000 on Bay?
So if you look...
I'm just asking, nobody answered that question.
I'll give you the answer that if you go to the 175 sheet, and Bay actually increases up to where they do it by $1,200 by moving it to year four, but you still realize a reduction of $40,000 in year four during that shift overall.
No, no, my question was, is not doing the fill and seal cracks, in other words, does that...
Put it off.
Yeah, does that cause more erosion than would otherwise? That's all I was trying to get at.
When you fill and seal the cracks, it helps preserve the road and it holds up the life.
That's why I'm asking.
It's not a bad thing to do it, but it's all in what we have for funds and what you want to, what you want to do. He had to pick and choose to try to get in that number you wanted, you know?
It's not set in stone, either. We can...
Totally, if you guys wanted to add that, you could keep it in there, you know? If you want to give us another 6,200.
6,000. Counselor LaBranche?
I know, judging from the looks of the council, they support the $50,000, but I just, I do not support it, taking the 50,000 this year, I just want to be on record for that.
Any other councilors not support it? I don't support it. The 50,000? Looks like you have enough councilors to move forward with the plan, round up 175. Rick, just so you know, too, I was asked last week to talk to the lawyer about bids, about whether we'd have to put things out to bids, or if we could extend the contract, and the answer was, we'd have to go out to bid.
Okay. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fox Hollow.
Thanks for doing it.
Yeah.
And your price was right.
It was free.
I know. We should take more advantage of being next to University of New Hampshire.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you very, very much.
Fox Hollow. Rick, your vow, do you want to...
Can I go first, or?
Thank you. Just to kind of put forward from where the planning board left Fox Hollow off, and follow-up from our original memo that I had sent out to the council from our May meeting, there were five recommendations that we were hoping the council would act upon through DPW. A few of those actions were taken right away, such as clearing vegetation in the right of way, putting up one of the other warning signs, and that helped tremendously, because at our meeting in, we did a site walk in June, and there was, excuse me, in July here, and there was some, you know, a lot of the residents came out and really appreciated that work to being done. So one of the, one of the other items on that recommendation list was to move the stop line up towards the road, such as exists on some of the other roads along Grant Road, and a resident did come and speak against that. The reason being is, as that line moved closer to Grant Road, it caused a different sight, line of sight issue that was actually worse. So that particular recommendation, we would, are not, we're removing that, if you will. At our planning board meeting, we did, we did vote on a motion that was approved to issue an order to the developer. The legal title to the road still is under the developer, it was never deeded to the association, no one ever stepped forward to request that the town, except Fox Hollow is a public road. So we did issue the order, we felt that we really needed to do that from a legal perspective, because it was deemed that the, that the road condition, as it, the private road condition as it exists, is a public, is a hazard to those who are traveling in the public right of way. And that's what the RSA is based upon. If any private, if any driveway or private road is, creates a danger to motorists or people using the public road, then the planning board has the right under this RSA to issue this, this order of deficiency and corrective actions. We did place a 180-day time period on that, that we were seeking to request correction, failing which, we would turn it over for the... failing which we would turn it over for the town to take any legal remedies. Subsequent to that vote, and we're really not sure that's going to go anywhere because again, the developer's no longer in business, we did hear back from a letter that, that we were able to at least get into the hands of the individual who had done the development, but not the legal entity, that's been dissolved, stating that it was their opinion that everything had been turned over to the homeowners association. But again, there's been no deed to that road turned over to the, to the homeowners association. So our second discussion on the matter was this whole issue and, and request by many of the homeowners there, that would, they would like to see the town take over actual deeded ownership and maintenance of Fox Hollow. What is preventing, I think, anyone from putting that forward to the town council is that they haven't, that development has not met the terms of conditions of the subdivision approval, which included filing an as-built plan of the road when it was completed with the town planning office. It is an administrative decision, we do not have a, an as-built plan for that road. We've, the engineer who actually approved the plan originally, which was Emmanuel, he feels that the road was built to the specifications that was approved when it was done originally. The line of sites were based upon the posted speed limit as opposed to the, the, the current engineer or the revale that the, that Vanessa did was based upon the typical travel speed or the, the observed travel speed. So obviously, if you're traveling faster, you need a, faster than the speed limit, you need a, longer lines of sight. Rick Malaski was gracious enough to attend our site walk in, with the, several of the members of the planning board and residents there and the engineer. And the, the thought was that most of the obstruction that is remaining for the line, to achieve the recommended line of sites is actually in, in the public way, and I'll let Rick speak to that. So based upon the fact that the, the town was, has been maintaining that road, the road is completed, I mean, it's really just the as-built that hasn't been filed. So the town has been maintaining that road for several years. The, the trash is picked up at the residents' homes, it's not treated as a private road relative to municipal services. I don't know if the police department travels down Fox Hollow and if that's a normal course that they would do on a private road anyway, I don't know. But there, the bond, so there's a lot of issues that you tend to say, is it really fair to the homeowners to have to pick up this tab that are there? Many of them bought, as it was represented as being a public road, the subsequent purchasers. And, you know, so the, there was a motion made at the planning board level relative to having the planning board recommend for the town council to adopt Fox Hollow as a, as a public road. And so that's, I hope that clears up any, you know, any discussions from your last meeting regarding where the planning board is at with this. I mean, we have no authority to adopt this, the town council has to adopt all roads unless they're laid out by, by the town. So any, if I can answer any questions where the planning board's at? If not, you know, Rick may want to make some comments about the recommendation for, you know, doing additional work in the public right of way.
Counselor Levy.
Just one really quick one, Val. Do you have any ideas as to how in the future we can avoid this happening again?
Excellent question. The reason we're here today, at this point, I mean, several years after, homes were built and occupied and the town's been maintaining it. The bond that was posted for the road, that would have covered these additional costs that may have been incurred prior to the town adopting the road, was not, the way that it was written, it did not automatically renew. So therefore, that bond expired. And there was really, I'm going to say, there was no administrative oversight to that. That was under a prior planet, planner. Diane now has a, a pretty detailed checklist or tracking for conditions of approval of subdivision, subdivisions, and one of them relates to the bond. Additionally, legal counsel, you know, town legal counsel will review any bonds to make sure that they don't expire, that they, they, they need to be automatically renewable, renewal, have a renewal clause in them. And that the town, just as if you held a certificate of insurance for, you know, someone doing business with you, that you would be notified if in fact that bond wasn't being renewed. So, and you'd have a, a certain period of time. That's how it's trying to be addressed so that, that situation can't happen again because we would still have a bond to go after.
And, and I wasn't around then either, but when I read the minutes, I, I think the planning board sort of said it was okay or they thought it might be okay, but it wasn't, you know? That's sort of part of my question too, in other words, you know, the language in the approvals sort of implied that it was okay.
Be, what, what, what is okay?
Meaning, meaning that it was safe. It was, you know, and then it became an issue, obviously, after people were living there, you know, it really came to a head.
I don't know about prior planning boards and I've been sort of, you know, coming into, you know, in my second term now.
Yeah.
Projects typically don't come back to the planning board after they're approved. There are several conditions of approvals and developer agreement conditions that are administrative, that basically need to be completed by a developer before a bond is released. So the first time this has come to the planning board was when it was moved to us, you know, just this year from the council. So a prior, I don't think a prior planning board would have weighed in on the, you know, the safety aspect of the road unless it was brought forth to them, you know, by someone. And, and I know that hasn't been the case in at least the past five years.
I'm just, just mentioning it.
Yeah.
Anything else for Val? Rick, do you have anything to add?
Just what, what the engineer recommended, there's a little tiny, tiny little knob on the left team, if you're sitting at the stop sign to leave Fox Hollow, that needs to be addressed. To address that and do it properly, there's one tree that needs to be removed. It's all in our right of way on the Grant Road corner. We could do all of the work except for remove the tree because of the power lines. It's, it's already been trimmed, so it's, it's really not in PSNH's trim zone, but sometimes they'll work with us and take it down for us, call it, say that it is. But it is a health, the tree doesn't look unhealthy. So we may need someone to remove the tree for us, but we could do all the other work. It's half a day of work. Scratch off that little knob, loam it, seed it, call it a day. Like, as Val said, the, the subdivision was inspected, walked through, everything was okay, we've just not received the as-built. So if this little knob, which has been deemed a safety issue, should be addressed immediately, Diane was going to file a complaint. I know the developer went belly up, but we may, we may be able to get something back, possibly. But it would basically be the crew out there for half a day and then this tree removal, which would be the biggest cost to us. We have all the materials, we have all the equipment to handle everything else. I was asked, come out and take care of this, it's a safety issue, and I just said that it needed to come up, you know, to this level, just to get your blessing, we could go out and take care of that, so.
What is the, before Counselor Levy goes, what is the cost of the tree removal? Do you have an estimate?
It's probably a $600 tree, I'm just guessing, but on average, it's, it's not a huge tree, but it's fairly good size and caliber. It's not a lot of leaders leading off it, but I, it would be my hopes to get PSNH to take it down because what I'm saying is it's in their trim zone, so, and if that's not the case, then I would have to have the tree guy come in and take care of it. But I'm confident that I could work with them to get them to take this tree down because it's, it's definitely within their trim zone, in my opinion.
Counselor Levy.
That was part of my question, would, all in, Rick, what do you think it's going to cost? Everything?
It would be the crew-
Yeah, just ballpark, is it, is it a thousand, is it two grand, is it?
It's the crew's labor, we have the loam, we have, we have seed already.
That's a lot better than the 70, 80,000 we were looking at when we did the site walk a year ago.
Yes.
Right.
We're not going to lower the road, it's not, it's not necessary, the engineer, it's just this little, little knob and to do it properly and make it so there's no questions, if we remove the tree, we can go back into the slope a little further and there'll be no questions and it'll put this to bed.
Is it on the left when you come out of the driveway?
Take a left, it's on the left-hand side.
Thank you.
Counselor Zink.
This, this to me is a perfect example of what the town council shouldn't be doing, and that's talking about a $600 tree. Sorry, I think the leadership of our DPW guy that made that decision.
So you're looking for us to tell you to do it?
Well, there was a lot of, essentially, because Fox Hollow is still a private road, it hasn't been accepted. But the work would all be within the town's right of way, it has nothing to do with Fox Hollow, it's actually off of Grant Road.
Before, before we go and make a motion for this, is the, I guess the question on the table really becomes, is this something that requires town council action or is this something administrator can direct you?
I can, I can, that's totally okay with me.
Do you have money in the budget to cover it?
Yeah, we're all set.
Do it.
Great.
That's action. Anything else? Great. Thank you very much.
And I, it sounded like, just so you all know, the, it sounded like the homeowners were probably going to get those as-bolts to us, their association may be getting those to us, and then, like I said, that's, that's it, we have those, we could accept that road 100%.
So we need to have it at another agenda, another meeting, a conversation about accepting a road?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is impact fees, and as a, if the council recalls in January 14th, received a letter from the planning board, from the former chair, stating that there was concern over the use of impact fees in 2007, about 142,000 for the study of the school going at the, what is currently the golf course. The council agreed that I should talk to legal as, and legal pulled up the consultant's, Bruce Mayberry's, which is in our packet right now, read through his, his synopsis of it, and then provided his, his opinion on whether or not it was a legal use of impact fees, and concluded that it was. So according to our attorney, the impact fees were used properly for the school study, the 142,000 dollars. To me, the question now becomes one that the planning board brought before us before, which was, given the confusion around the usage of impact fees and the challenges that we've had, should we stick with impact fees or should we change to a, and the word is slipping, it's on the tip of my tongue.
System development charge.
System development charge. I don't think that's necessarily the item that's on the agenda today, but I think it's something that we need to take, the, when the planning board came before us before, they strongly encouraged us to move, to shift to a system development charge, and I'm not sure why we stopped that conversation. I think we may have been, it was around, it was December, January timeframe, we may have been overcome by events based on the tax rate and everything else that had been going on at that time, but I think it's something that, that, my note's something we're going to put on a future agenda to have a conversation about. And just for everyone else in the public to be aware, we are also going to see, Matt is working on a checklist of criteria for impact fee usage, so that when we get requests for impact fees, it's not just coming at us at the 11th hour, but we're going to receive a checklist saying whether or not it meets, according to town, the criteria to use impact fees. That being said, item number three on the agenda is appointment of, to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, Diane Hardy to be a member thereof. We received a letter from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission saying that the, or appointing, I forget, to accept the appointment, of Diane Hardy as the 2010 through 2012, oh, I'm sorry, this is a copy of the old letter, I apologize. We need a 2013 to 2014 appointee to be a member of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, our representative, and it's been Diane Hardy, go ahead.
Our nomination, I don't know if there's some confusion here, the nomination was for Sonkey Dornblut, who had applied for that position?
That is not what we received. No.
Yeah, I'm not, because Rick McMenamin had been the, had been our representative, and at our last planning board meeting, we had the recommendation, which actually came through from Diane, was Sonkey Dornblut.
Well, do you need, does the Stratford Regional Planning Commission require a representative in the next two weeks?
Probably not.
You-
We actually have two openings, so unless Diane has applied for the second opening and-
No, this is-
I, I think that, did that come from Diane?
I believe so.
I'll, I'll talk to her tomorrow.
Okay.
The letter came from Cynthia Coop.
The letter came from Cynthia.
Oh, yeah, well, that hasn't been discussed at the planning board level.
Hasn't been?
We'll be, we'll be meeting with Cynthia next week.
Okay.
No, we had this other appointment, so that's what you really should be before you as well.
How about you and I, you just let me know after the planning board's made the decision, we'll add it to the agenda then.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Before, we were burning through this today, health insurance policy. The chair of the efficiency committee got hold of me and said that they do not have all the documentate, they're collecting the documentation, so we obviously can't make a decision based on what documentation we got last week. But the one piece of information that he did share that I think is very pertinent is that we are not on that artificial timeline of we have to change it at the change of the plan year, that it can be changed at the first of any month. So we are not under some sort of gun of the plan year changed on June 30th and now we have to change it. I don't think that we should lose our sense of urgency, but I, I, we don't have to feel like we're negotiating under some artificial timeline, so. Sorry, Counselor Branch, your light was on.
It's okay, that was for earlier, but I now have a question on this.
Okay.
Have, have we had discussions with the police union on this matter?
We haven't had discussions. I have brought the fact sheet and explained what was talked about at the last meeting to them, to the shop steward, and he was going to bring it to the membership. Where they're at is that they are in the process of changing representation, they've dropped the team, so it's going to pick up at another union.
Right.
I don't know that that is, that the other union at this point can negotiate for them. I believe there's a vote that's necessary from the PELRB for us, so I, I don't know where they're at at this point. I think they're looking for some guidance from the new leadership on what they should do and how they should handle it, so.
Thank you.
But they're aware of the, the-
Warm and comfy feeling, yawn?
I don't want to speak for them.
Okay, okay.
Smart man. Counselor Levy.
When we discuss this next-
Are they going to come back in?
Yeah, when next, when next we discuss it, which may or may not be next meeting, maybe the meeting after that, there should be representation, yes.
Okay, and just, you said it wasn't under a gun, which is, which is fine, so the insurance policy that they're currently under goes through when?
The insurance policy that is currently, they're under right now-
Yeah.
Goes June 30th to, I'm sorry, July 1st to June 30th. But they can make changes to it at the first of any month. So there's no artificial timeline out because that, there you go.
So we can change it in September, whenever-
There you go.
And, and the thought is they're going to be in here next, next meeting?
Next meeting or the meeting after that.
Thank you.
Next is use of auto gas in the cruiser, and I don't see Mr. Prue in the audience.
I believe that he was waiting on some material.
He's still waiting on it?
Yeah, before he was going to commit. I have talked to Bob Coffey and I believe it's a program that we could implement and get some cost savings, although I'm, I'm not sure how, whether it's the same numbers he's talking about or not. There would be about a $5,000 outlay. The only thing that concerns me is with a new vehicle, let's say if we were to buy a new cruiser and we bought- let's say if we were to buy a new cruiser and we bought from Ford, Ford will not cover the drivetrain warranty if we make this modification to the car. I have that in an email from a senior representative at Ford. It has been disclosed that there is a insurance rider that will cover any drivetrain issues that must be provided by the manufacturer of the auto gas equipment. But I have not seen that document or that insurance rider that comes with it. So I would like to see that before we expose the equipment to, by, you know, avoiding our warranty. Other than that, I think it's possible that we could save some money fuel-wise. Maybe, it should be, if we can resolve the warranty issue, I'd be comfortable with us trying it.
Where does the rider come from?
I believe it comes from the company that manufactures the equipment that is attached to the car to make it run on propane.
So Prue Oil is the one that's gonna give us, it's not, they're not providing it, but they're gonna have the documentation.
Correct. It's coming from the company that builds the converter that goes onto the car. And I believe that's what's holding things up.
Okay. We have a conversation with them to get, to get that, put it in our packet and have it, so we can actually have a conversation of this of any substance. We are having a light agenda tonight unless one of these is about to turn really crazy. Tim Nichols regarding Water Street discontinuance. This might be it.
I'll start by giving a quick update on the project. As most of you know, we've been working for the past year and a half on redevelopment of the thirteen Water Street property. We have a, and when I say we, I'm talking about my firm, AEC Engineering Firm. We have a, an agreement on a property, a purchase and sales lease agreement, or purchase, property purchase agreement. And there are several conditions to that agreement. One of the conditions, obviously obtaining a planning permit approval. Another condition is receiving RSA seventy-nine E benefits from the town. So the first topic tonight I wanted to speak about is the RSA seventy-nine E and the eligibility for our project. And I understand that the council had previously voted in opposition to providing that incentive for this redevelopment. And I'm not sure where the process is at this point, if there's been any further discussion, but what I'd like to do is ask the council to reconsider that decision based on what I have to say. And then the second part of what I wanted to speak about tonight is the right-of-way, I'm sorry, the RSA seventy-nine E has not been voted on yet. The right-of-way has been voted on, so that's the second thing we could talk about. But I know you're all familiar with, with RSA seventy-nine E. New Market is one of about twelve communities in the state that have adopted it. And the real intent of seventy-nine E is to provide towns, cities with an incentive to redevelop, revitalize the downtown urban areas. One thing that attracted me to New Market was the revitalization that was underway, the Main Street and the recent Mills redevelopment and the fact that Chinburg had been, provided the RSA seventy-nine E tax relief. And based on our understanding of the program, our project would certainly qualify as well. So again, that, that was a contingency or is a contingency in our purchase, purchase and sales agreement presently. So I'll just recite real quick, quickly, the seventy-nine E. But essentially, it, it has to provide a public benefit and it's focused on urban areas, downtown areas. And it essentially determines a qualifying structure, or a building has to be a qualifying structure. And there's two types of qualifying structures or approaches to redevelopment of a qualifying structure. One is substantial renovation and that is what Chinburg is doing, the Mill Building. And the second one is replacement of an existing building. So our approach is obviously a replacement of, of an existing building. And seventy-nine E clearly defines that as a qualifying structure. So one of the, one of the concerns or I think the most recent discussion was about the historic nature of the building. What RSA seventy-nine E does say is that if there, if it is within a historic district or it is on the National Register of Historic Places, it does have to be a Department of Historic Resources architectural inventory has to be completed, basically to assess the building, determine if it has significant historical architectural features and value. Depending on the result of that inventory and the determination, then the building can either be substantially renovated or replaced. So our approach is to complete the historic architectural inventory, which is not an inexpensive process. We have, we have to hire a state-approved architectural historian to go through the building, inventory, everything that's in it, assess not only the structure itself, but the cultural value of the property and whether or not replacement of that structure still retains that historical qualities to the property. So before we engage in that process and bring a consultant in, I just want some assurance from the town that the property is a qualifying property under seventy-nine E and pending the outcome of the architectural inventory, it would be approved for the tax relief as allowed by seventy-nine E. And I know this is not, this is a workshop, so you don't vote and make decisions, but I would ask that you consider that. And then I will follow up with Diane and I'm not sure what the next step would be. But there is a, there is a time clock, which I haven't gone back and checked the application date, but I'm fairly certain we're, we're at the end of the initial time clock as required through seventy-nine E. So I did wanna get before you and talk about that. Are there any questions about seventy-nine E before I move?
Counselor Branch.
I guess my first question is, have you filled out the forms for seventy-nine E?
Yes.
Where are they?
Okay.
Who, who did you give them to? Do you recall?
I'm pretty sure they were given to Diane.
Okay, 'cause realistically, we can't act unless we've actually got the application in front of us.
Right, understood.
Because there's, there's obviously a lot of criteria and questions that get answered within that, within that form. So not having seen the form filled out, it's, it would be difficult for me to say yes or no either way. I mean, seventy-nine E does have specific criteria. We, we got a very good lesson when we voted to have seventy-nine E available. But, you know, until we see the form, I don't think there's anything that this council will commit to. Or at least, there's nothing I'll commit to, I'll put it that way. I can't speak for the council.
To have even the conversation until we've seen the form seems premature for us. We, I think we need, we'll get Diane Hardy to, to provide it to us. And I'll gladly put it back on the agenda, have the conversation at that point. But I think it's really hard for us to even have a conversation without...
Okay, I understand.
It's not out of bad faith, it's just out of, we wanna make sure we're doing our due diligence.
Okay, all right.
Counselor Levy, is this about seventy-nine E or is this?
Right, and based on the discussions I had with Diane and Ed, I assume that you had received the form. I know, okay.
Okay, Counselor Levy.
Are we gonna see, within that documentation, the entire project? My understanding this is gonna be condos, correct?
It's mixed use. It's condos, retail, and office.
Sorry, retail and what?
And professional office space, including our, my company's office.
So when we get that documentation, will it clearly annotate all of what is gonna be there?
I don't believe it requires that much documentation on the replacement.
Okay.
But I'm not certain. I'd have to go back and look at the form. It's been a while. But everything has been, I mean, we have everything. We can provide whatever the, the council...
I was just curious what's go, I mean, I know what the Mills sorta kinda has, you know, the breakdown. I don't know exactly, you know, to the, to the number of condos versus rentals. And then there's some space for arts and whatnot. So I was just curious to know what exactly... I haven't seen the plan for this, so, you know, is, is that all within the planning? Do they have all that?
Yes, right now we're actually redesigning the building. We've, we've moved, shifted the building away from the church property. And we're looking to make it a little more architecturally correct for the area, so.
I mean, if we could, if we could have that within that paperwork, it'd be great. But I, we'll talk to Diane. We'll get, we'll get everything. Thank you. Counselor Wright, I don't wanna get too far down a rabbit hole.
On seventy-nine, you said there's a timeframe. What's the, when's it end?
I believe it's forty-five days to, to, from the date it's been filed to the date that there's a public meeting by the, the approving authority, which would be the town council.
Yes. When, when did you file it?
I honestly don't recall, but it's been, I think it's been pretty close to forty-five days.
Counselor Branch.
If I may suggest, I, I think that the best thing for us to do is to, A, ask Chief Seer, Acting Administrator Seer, to check with Diane Hardy and see if in fact she has that form filled out and get it to us quickly. If she does, and even, if she doesn't, to at least get the council a blank form so that they know what the criteria is and some information on seventy-nine E itself. It'll go a long way towards helping to speed the process up, I believe, if, if everybody knows what's required to, to apply for seventy-nine E.
And she may have put it on hold because there was a, I know she'd gotten some advice from the outside council on the architectural qualifications.
Counselor Wright. We actually did get in our packet at one time that application, I believe.
When? You know, I have all the packets here.
I'm trying to think, maybe the month after I came. I don't know if it's completely filled out, but there was something with your engineering name on it and it was a whole application form. It was in one, it wasn't, it was, it was in the paper packet.
Paper, oh, we never got the digital copy?
I don't believe we got the digital.
It might have been planning board minutes or something.
Yeah. Okay, it was a planning board. I mean, if it was when you first came on board, then it would have been before the, he actually submitted it. Because you said it's been close to forty-five days.
Yeah, and the only I could think is that she may have withheld the formal application, submittal, pending review by the outside council.
We will get the documentation from Diane. Discontinuance? You wanna talk about that?
Yes. Yeah, and I, just for the sake of reciting the, the issue, in the course of surveying the property, Ducette Surveying found that there was a historical right-of-way, town right-of-way, that extended from Main Street to the town docks or the former town docks. And it's three-rod wide, which is fifty-two and a half feet. And it's a straight corridor. There's no corners. All of the existing properties, five properties, including the town, thirteen Water Street, the church, and two other private properties are all within the right-of-way. The church most notably has been constructed well inside the right-of-way until the most recent realignment or apparent realignment was in nineteen seventy-eight when a surveyor had essentially redefined the property bounds to the existing curb line on Water Street. And for whatever reason, that historical right-of-way wasn't found by that surveyor. Ducette did find it and so essentially I'm in a position where I have got to dissolve the right-of-way in order to get lending on the property and, well, in order to purchase the property and get financing for it from a bank. So we were in the process of putting together a plan. There was a discussion with, with the council and with your legal advise, legal counsel about how to proceed with that. And apparently what evolved was a, a vote by the council to put the burden, the cost burden, onto the single property, thirteen Water Street, for recording a plan that discontinues that right-of-way and resets the bounds to where everybody had believed it to be. So essentially, it's a forty-seven hundred dollar cost for Ducette to go in to survey and to file that deed. And the cost for me to do it is zero because I've already paid him to, to survey my property. So it's, it's an additional cost of forty-seven hundred dollars to me, the potential property owner, to discontinue a right-of-way for, for other properties for which I have no interest in. And those properties cannot be sold or financing could not be secured for those properties until the right-of-way is discontinued for those, including the town parcel. So what I'm asking the council tonight is to reconsider the decision to put that cost burden onto me to pay for a right-of-way discontinuance in four other, four properties that happen to be on the same street. It's a town right-of-way. I didn't create it, unfortunately. I found it. The surveyors that had previously done work for the town unfortunately did not find it, including when the easement was done across the Surboggy property about four years ago. And that was done by, by the town. So unfortunately, it wasn't caught then, it wasn't caught in nineteen seventy-eight when the prior survey was done. But it happened to be caught now and, and because I'm in a position where I need to get the right-of-way and I'm the one that needs to get financing on a property that's affected by it, the cost burden has been shifted to me and I think that's quite unfair.
Counselors? Ms. Your Valley.
Question and then a con, I don't know the, I don't know the process. It was just surveyed. I'm not quite sure why we need to be surveyed again, not knowing legal terms or surveying. I'm certainly one of the ones who spoke about it and what I had said then is that I had a hard time telling a nonprofit agency like the community church who has done a ton of things, you know, just like I'm sure the, you know, the other church has too. A ton of things for, everything from kids to the elderly to, you know, over, you know, I've seen it for forty years. So I said, you know, I said, I don't think the town should try to sell any of these. I was the first one that said that. We don't wanna try to sell land to the church or sell land to you or all these four or five properties are not our land for whatever reason. We're not looking to make money out of it. But I absolutely said I didn't think that, that a nonprofit, you know, outstanding thing of our community should have to put any bill. And I'll, you know, that's just me. You know, I don't know what the other six think, but that was my comment about the church itself.
And I am willing to pay for the, for the church portion for the refiling.
Counselor Zink.
Can I ask, what is the question for us?
So the, if you recall...
I mean, are we, is the question reconsideration?
It's a, it's a request to reconsider what our last vote was, which was to have Mr. Nichols or his organization foot the entire bill for the legal, or not the legal, the survey work to discontinue the right-of-way.
So you need a motion?
I would need a motion. And, okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the decision relative to the entity responsible for the payment of the new survey.
So it's a motion to reconsider. For a second?
I'll second to get it on the table.
Motion and a second, discussion. Counselor Branch?
I, I guess my question is, we've, we've talked about the community church and the town owns property. Any other parcels or, or property owners involved in this, other than the church and the town?
Two private.
My question is, how do we force them to pay? Or do we, or does the town pay their fees? So that's, that's a concern I have, is, you know, I can't very well go, if, if Counselor Zink owns property, I can't say, Counselor Zink, I just spent twelve-hundred dollars of your money. How do we do that? That's my question.
I guess the, the question would be turned into, have you had any conversations with the other property owners?
No.
Counselor Levy?
Just so I have my facts straight, because it's been awhile since we discussed this. Am I accurate to, to understand that the issue is, when you redo these buildings, the property line is going to change and the, a part of your building is going to go on to what is now town property? Is that the issue?
It would, it would encroach onto...
Well, it will actually be on town property, correct?
It would be very close, but it would encroach within the setback, the required setback.
It wouldn't be on property yet, it would be encroached in setback.
So the town is willing, I'm just trying to reconstruct this, because this was quite awhile ago that we talked about it. So we were willing to say, we don't have a problem with it encroaching upon the setback. For some reason, I thought it was actually in the set, you know, on our property. I thought we were, I thought this was actually going to be within the street that we own.
We were, we were changing Water Street, was the conversation.
Yeah, so he could expand his building into property that we, as the town currently own. Right? That's, that was my understanding. And based on that, I don't think the town should be paying anything. I mean, with all due respect, if, if I was doing a building, and my building, in order to get that done, was encroaching upon a town's property, I would be grateful that the town allowed me to encroach upon their property and surrender the property and not charge them for the property.
It's a right-of-way, it's not property line, right-of-way.
For, for some reason, because this was maybe months ago, I just can't recall, I thought the issue was there was a corner of the building that was actually going to go on property that was owned by the town. Now, if I'm wrong, it's just because my memory isn't that good, but that was my recollection. And I, I don't know if that was your recollection, John, or not, but that was...
I'm waiting to speak, but...
Oh, go ahead, no, go ahead, please.
I agree, that was my recollection, because we even made the joke, we're certainly not going to make them disassemble a church. We, the way I understood it was, there were three or four properties on town property, because someone here actually even made a statement about if that were the case, and Mr. Nichols would have built this thing, and someone slipped on, at his business, but it was really town property, you know, would there be something signed? That was the initial discussion. We wanted to be green-clay, we didn't want to sell land back to anyone, but we didn't want to ever have someone say, I slipped and fell here, but it's really town property. So I agree, Gary, that I certainly was on the impression that these four things were on town property.
Yeah, it's, for clarification, it's not town property, it's, it's a town right-of-way. And the bank, the bank will not lend on a, on a new development that encroaches within an existing right-of-way.
So... Counselor Branch, I'll let you go in a minute, but I haven't had my chance to speak. I'll restate what I stated that night. We own a portion of property there, there's two other businesses that own a portion of property there, at the church, but I understand you'd be willing to pick up the, the church's portion of the bill. I think it's our obligation as good neighbors, as owners of a portion of this area, to find a way to negotiate a, a shared cost of this forty-seven-hundred dollars. It's mine, I said it last time, I'll say it again. Counselor Branch?
I just, I don't have the minutes in front of me, but I seem to recall that the existing building is actually sitting, a corner of it is actually sitting on town property. And that's what is bringing in a lot of this survey need, if I'm not mistaken.
In the right-of-way, not town property?
I think the, I think the building itself, a corner of it. And I'd have to research the minutes to find it, but I'm pretty certain that that's what was presented to us originally.
And it could have been wrong, Mr. Nichols.
Right.
It was presented to us, I'm clear.
Yeah, maybe it was inaccurately presented to us, please.
Okay. The property line is much different than a right-of-way.
Counselor Levy?
Just, just in closing, because I don't remember, I'm looking at, I can't remember when we discussed it, but, you know, whether it's property, which was my understanding, or, or a, a right-of-way, or an encroachment, or whatever the terminology is. I guess my feeling is, if the town is willing to let that building impede or go within that property line, I think that's a reasonable position for the town to take. I think that's being a good neighbor. I think we're, we're, we're not preventing someone from expanding the building, because it is expanding the current building, it was my understanding.
Right, and I'm, I'm not, just so we're clear, I'm not asking the town to, to pay for me, my property to be discontinued. I'm objecting to paying for, for the properties, paying for them to be discontinued. That's my objection. I've already, I've already paid to have mine surveyed and, and rerecorded.
Counselor Zeg?
I, I get a flavor of a bigger issue. And I've had some discussions relative to this, just some offline discussions. And I think we've got to be very careful, the message we're sending to developments that are coming into our town. Twenty-nine E is put in there for our benefit, as well as yours. Changing these boundary lines are for our benefit, as well as for yours. And the thought that we're doing a developer a big favor by being a little bit... I, I think, I think we're, that's a horror show down there, and it's been a horror show down there. It needs to come down, it's a piece of junk. And I think, I just don't, I, I don't like the feeling that we're, the message that at least I think we may be sending to folks like you. So for that reason, especially considering the fact that he's willing to, to help out the nonprofit, I would, I would fully support not only reconsideration, but the town absorbing that cost. Thank you.
Counselor Wright? I'm sure this has been a long and frustrating process for you, a person who's put up a building in this town. How much money do, are you being invested in this? What's this building's gonna...
Ultimately, or today?
No, ultimately.
Cost, total cost of it going up? It's increasing by the day, but...
I'm sure it is.
It's about four-point-two million dollars.
Four-point-two million, you're going to be investing in, in Newmarket?
Yes.
I have no problem with, I have no problem at all, spending the cost like you see it.
And this is where we're putting our business, our office, hanging our hat.
Counselor, Mr. Bentley?
Well, I guess, Tim, I was wondering if it is, and there's no other way, there's no other written thing that a bank would accept and say, look, this is what we're doing, this, it's just been surveyed, you know, what? It's, not even from you, I mean, from the town, or from, there's nothing, I'm sure, I'm sure you've looked at it. It just seems silly to me that it was just surveyed, and we're all in a, pretty much in agreement, we want to allow this, and there's nothing else but a resurvey.
The only thing I haven't done is, is had a discussion with my bank, and we actually, we just recently switched banks. But I do want to have that discussion and see if there is a, a workable solution for them. But typically, if there is a right-of-way on a property that shows up on a plan, the institution will not lend on it unless there's some agreement or discontinuance of that right-of-way.
I would throw yourself at their mercy, first of all, and ask them, and say, it seems to be some, you know, and this is the reason why, and, and the town's agreed we'll try to work, but I've sat here many times and said, we need to do everything we can do to businesses, what, you know, and I think we need to do that to attract them and, and work with them. My, my biggest concern was the, was the church, the nonprofit, and so...
Understood.
I support doing whatever we can do to make it work.
Counselor Branch?
How many properties are, how many property owners or are involved over this whole thing?
Five, including the town and my property.
Five. Including the town and your property.
There's two, there's two, I believe, there, apartment buildings, the two private properties.
Well, the old video.
The old video.
Sir?
No, come on up.
It is a right-of-way we're talking about, the property lines, the building on the property is within its own property lines, and it is a right-of-way. I think, going back to Counselor Bentley's point there about going to the bank, possibly could be a much more cumbersome process going through the bank to get this than it is going through the town. The town has quite graciously said they will give up the right-of-way, which they're happy to do, and that was voted out at a previous meeting. The, the cost of it then is like, I think I'm losing my track of thought now for a second, but, but part of the things, if you go back, and you can possibly go back and ask Diane Hardy this, because, and Ed, Ed Wannowski dealt with it previously. Ed got legal advice as well, after the town made his decision to give up the rights-of-way. I believe the legal advice was that, in order for the town to do it, the actual right-of-way had to be properly recorded in, on some plan somewhere. And there was nothing in the past, so now it has to be a new kind of plan to be recorded. So that's why I think it has to be done at the town level, for it to give up the right-of-way. He could throw himself at the mercy of the bank, but there is difficult about anything with giving financing these days.
Can I continue?
Yeah, one following, then Counselor Levy.
Well, actually, I was going to make a motion.
Is there a motion on the table?
Uh, there's a motion to reconsider, what we should have done was taken a vote on that motion, because...
We're still in discussion, I guess, we, we've shifted the discussion off of the motion to reconsider.
Okay.
Would you, want to withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Would you second it, would you want to withdraw your second?
Sure.
Do you want to make a new motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we, that the town and Newmarket contribute two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars towards surveying costs, which will be the town's share plus the two properties that are privately owned, and that the church is not liable for any fees on the survey fees. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
The cost would actually be the forty-seven-hundred divided by four, because we've already paid our, for our survey.
I'll stick with my motion.
I'll second.
So, discussion. So right now, the motion is for the town to pay twenty-eight-twenty, which would leave nineteen-hundred dollars still to be paid for, which would be...
It's basically nine-forty an entity, nine-hundred-and-forty dollars an entity.
Discussion. Counselor Levy, your lights out.
Yeah, just for whatever it's worth, it was on the March seventh agenda, because I just pulled it up. And what it says is, apparently, this was add, I forwarded to Attorney Richardson the survey work performed by Dusset Survey for Tim Nichols regarding the right-of-way. And basically, the long and short of it is, it says that in light of the fact that the right-of-way, as it is current configured on the ground today, is different from what was laid out in eighteen twenty-four, Justin suggested that the council follow the procedure outline in RSA two-thirty-one-twenty-seven, which provides for the council to reestablish the boundary lines, limits and locations, similar to the manner provided to the Commissioner of Transportation, which I believe we voted to do, I, I believe. And then it goes on to say, they'll reestablish a highway and they'll change, you know, they'll do whatever they need to do to change it. So I think we voted to do all that with the Secretary of State, et cetera. I don't know if it was implemented, but we, I think, based on what I'm looking at here, I think we voted in the affirmative. I think what we didn't want to do is have the town incur a cost based on the fact that we were basically giving up land, and I still feel the same way, but that's okay. It's just my opinion, so...
I am of mind with Counselor Wright, that we are, talking about penny-wise and pound foolish, we're talking about forty-seven-hundred dollars and then four-point-two million dollars of development work, which is jobs and the economic throw-off of lunches and breakfasts and coffee, eating in town. To me, I think that, that I'd be willing, at this point, it's our road and our right-of-way that we're trying to reset. And I understand that there's some benefit potentially to, to private investor, but the private investor's putting a ton of money into this community. And I don't think us getting our right-of-way recorded correctly should have to fall on private entities at this point, as much as I wouldn't want a private entity having to assume that we be paying for theirs. Counselor Carmichael?
I like what Counselor Branch said, twenty-eight-hundred. I think that's given our fish here, he's already said that he'd take care of the church, so I think that's, that's our fish here.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Our Chief, the vote?
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Nay.
Counselor Branch?
Aye.
Counselor Zink?
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes six to one, so twenty-eight-twenty going to that. We still, we're still going to have to form, have some sort of negotiation to, in order to actually conduct this, because that's only going to pay for a portion thereof, so the rest has to get paid for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is this something that maybe we should have a, we should have a public, I'm a little confused by the notion of a working session, and where you're actually voting on things, that's cost, that incur costs to town? And yet, there's no public here involved in this, so that's my question.
Yeah, so, I won't get into the, the peculiarities of, of the charter, but I, yeah, you didn't, come up and identify yourself and say, I might as well, getting into public comment now.
My name is Martin McKinsey, Sixth Washington Street. I guess my question just involves the, the notion that the town is, is, has just had a vote during a working session of this matter that involves town funds and town, town property related to, to the town, uh, central landscape here. And there's really no, I mean, there's been no discussion and no area in this. I know that when you discussed this before, there was in fact discussion of it. Now, there is no discussion of it, so that, I'm just kind of a little confused on the procedural level.
It's, I mean, it's a, it's a fair point. I don't think that we are technically required by the charter to have a public hearing over something like that, because it's a council forum of government as opposed to a select board. So the council does have more authority, according to the charter, than we would if it was a board of selectmen, which I know is to the ear of some residents of the community. So I, I don't think there's a legal issue with whatever with, which just transpired. But I understand your, and note your concerns about the conversation.
Okay.
Thank you. Review of standing committee minutes, planning board, Counselor Carmichael?
Yes, we had a design and review on the Rockingham Country Club, the fifty-one house lots were discussed, and the other big thing was the Fox Hollow, which is discussed here with Val tonight.
Black Bear and Highway Safety, no meetings for either of those. Conservation Commission, Counselor Wright?
We're just gearing up, we've got some activities for the Heritage Festival, which is going to be twenty-second. We're going to get the pontoon boat again, and we're looking for some conversation, land in the area to maybe take a guided tours, two or three guided tours about the day.
Excellent. CIP or Efficiency and Efficiency Committee, Counselor Branch?
CIP, we're actually meeting tomorrow down at the Firehouse to discuss wastewater treatment, well, water, wastewater, CIP funds, so... well, water, wastewater, CIP funds, so we're, we're starting to hit the departments, and we just got our forms back this past week, which was actually good, because they would do Monday, and I believe they were all available online to the CIP committee as of today, most of them were yesterday, I think, but by the end of the day today, we had them all, so we'll be moving forward there, and as far as the Efficiency Committee goes, I'd really rather defer that to Counselor Zink, because he's a very active member of that.
As you all know, we, we, the council and the school board met, and I think at the conclusion of the meeting, and please help me, all of you, because I want to make sure I'm right on this, that the Chair of the Council and the Chair of the School Board agreed to meet to address the concern, to address the opportunities that have been identified by the Efficiency Committee and the Citizens Committee to date. Those opportunities included insurance, financial management, facilities, and the deliberative session, the deliberative session was agreed to at that meeting, I don't know whether that needs to be memorialized or not, but there was agreement, as I understand it, at that meeting, to hold a deliberative session on the same day with the school and the town. The other thing that was agreed was that the school was meeting the following Saturday, and they, on an off-site, I forget what they, retrieved, and they were going to present, they were going to agree to the two or three items that they collectively agreed to move ahead on, out of that category of, of things we talked about. So I don't know whether they did that, and have presented them, or whether you've met, but I think our responsibility, I think the thing that's in the council's lap at this point, is to do the same thing, and that is to take those recommendations, which I think Counselor Levy summarized in, in the notes, and see if those are the opportunities that we wanted to proceed on, so I think that accurately reflects where we are.
Yes, and I, and I will say that I did meet with the Chair of the School Board, and we're gonna meet one more time prior to our next meeting, just to make sure that, and at a top, at a high level, we both believe that both of our bodies agreed with the conversation, and the four potential recommendations that were brought up, I think the peculiarities and the particulars of it have to be worked out, as to exactly what that looks like in action, but, which I think is the next step to take, as to what specifically would the council and the school board, the town and school, working together as a community, actually, what will those concrete actions be, not just generally, deliberative sessions are very concrete, but health insurance, what specifically around that, and what specifically around financial management will be shared services, as opposed to-
And I can follow up on that, Don Jutton was asked to give a comprehensive overview of how MRI thought those issues should be attacked, a scope of the project, a summary of the project, a timetable for the project, and a budget for the project. He submitted that yesterday, either today, I can't remember, today or yesterday, and I've sent that off to Bob Coffee, so we'll need to sit down as a group and look at the proposal, and, and make some decisions.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Budget Committee, Counselor Levy.
We'll be meeting, I believe, next month, so we haven't met since the last time.
Advisor Heritage Commission?
We have not met.
And Energy Committee? No meeting. Old new business, Vice Chair Bentley.
Just wanted to thank the seniors for the invite to the Jubilee, I was able to attend Friday for a little while, and the person who was cooking burgers and that, heating mugs, deserves an award, but it's a great, great event they held, and I want to thank him for that.
Any other old or new business? I think it's new business, yeah. That's the same.
I think this is old business, and it's, I, I'd just like to make a suggestion, and get the council's view on it. The suggestion is that every business meeting, first on the agenda, we address our objectives, and I think our objectives are defined at this point, and that we sit down as the first item on the agenda, and talk about how, what progress is we're making towards those. So if this were, if that is something you folks think would make sense, and I know this is a work session, not a business session, but right now, first on our agenda is road paving, second on the agenda is school impact fees, third on the agenda is Regional Planning Commission, fourth is, they're not even, they're not even close to being our objectives, and so by the very nature of putting them on the agenda first, we're giving them superior prominence in terms of our discussions, and I can just tell you from last year, the same thing happened, so I'd, I'd just like, as a suggestion, so that we can actually move forward on the objectives, that one of us has to at least stand up and say, "Okay, here's where we are on improving financial controls," as an example, so that's my, my thought.
Couldn't agree more. I, I agree, that we have to have the goals front and center in the business meeting, absolutely, and, yes, that I think that having a town administrator on board, this is gonna help shepherd the, not just the agenda, the backup information on the agenda, will be a huge effort in moving towards that direction, but I, I agree, that it's gotta start with the agenda. Thank you, Counselor Zink. Counselor Wright? Yeah, this is, I hope people just bear with me, on the green power management, I'm wanting to meet with a few counselors at a time, I really have trouble with that, and it's really bothering me, I think it's a very dangerous road we're going down. I mean, I'm all for, you know, this new technology, listen to ideas, but I think if they have an idea, instead of going two at a time, or one at a time to each individual counselors, that they should bring their ideas up in a public forum. It just seems to me that by doing this, they're getting a little bit of a preferential treatment, and I'd just like some transparency, you know, I just, I just see this getting out of hand, and other people just taking, you know, saying, it's, it's, I don't, I don't think it's the way to go, and I think I mentioned also about just, I don't know if I want to even get out of that, on conflict of interest, that can be another time, but I just think that someone who's on the Efficiency Committee, and potentially is pitching a business proposition, if that's what it is, I just think it's a huge conflict of interest. So, I'll comment on, I don't even know if I want to comment on conflict of interest, because I, I think we shouldn't be scaring away every single business owner that happens to be in the town from serving on commissions or committees in here- Yeah. -because I think that's some of the hugest intellectual capital we have within the community, and if we say, just because you happen to work at a business that does business within the town, you can't serve on any form of commission or committee, we would be shooting ourselves in the foot. Not, Chuck, do you don't think that, what about the town charter? You have to disclose it. You have to disclose it, there has to be disclosing, and they cannot serve on a committee or commission that will do them, like the charter says, the charter's very specific, as, and I agree, as to whether or not it can do the material gain by being on that. As far as meetings with people, people can take meetings with whomever they want, as long as it's not a quorum of the council present, and, I mean, I'm sure you talk to people all the time- Not, no, listen, listen, I have people have come to me and says, "Dan, I have some ideas about, you know, I want to put this development," I said, "Do not talk to me, I don't want to get into discussion." I mean, we have their right to talk to everyone, but the way this is looking, they're getting together with two councils at a time, I just, I don't think that should happen, I think it's a, I, I, it's very dangerous and slippery road we go down, and what we, all, what's happened in the past, I mean, I just, why would we want to go down that road? I just, it really bothers me, you know, if they'd love to come, I'd love to hear their ideas, but I think it should be in a public forum, not the way it's proposed. Noted, thanks. Counselor Carmichael.
I like what Dan just said. Yeah, let's keep it in front of the public, you know, there's always been rumors in the back, backroom deals, and ten years, twenty, forty years ago, I'd rather see it with a bunch of us in evidence discussions.
Counselor Zink?
So, I, I understand the concern, but we can't address this on a, I don't think we can address this on a situational case, I think if, if there was some concern, we need to draft language about what we can do and what we can't do, because I think situational decision-making is not the right way to do it, because, at least in my case, Dan, if somebody comes up to me and talks to me about some, I always listen, I don't tell them, don't, don't talk to, let me just finish, don't talk to me about it, if five people invite me over to the, invite you and me, and, and our wives over to the house, and want to sit down and talk about an idea they have for town, I don't shut them down. I mean, that's just the way-
I, I realize that, yeah.
So, so I'm with you-
Yeah.
-but what I would like to, if there's, if there's a proposition you want to make that, that restrains us from doing it, I'm very willing to listen to it, but I don't want to take a situation and think we've solved the problem, because I think we have some disagreement as to what we can and what we can't do, I'd like to see that, I think it has to be part of the charter.
No, yeah, can I just, this, you know, flown back, you know, I, but here's my whole problem, now, they're gonna, technically, or they will have talked to every single town council member before they actually have a public meeting, and I'm just saying, the public perception of that, it's, I think it's, it's a dangerous road, I really do, and I just think it's, maybe there's nothing wrong with it, you get some people in town, I mean, they're gonna start, you know, it's, it's thin in the fires, I-
If I could just-
Yeah, no, no, go ahead.
Respond to that? Totally with you, but these situations happen all the time, where four or five counselors will be engaged in a discussion about the Black Bear Tiff, thank God it's no longer there, I think we need to be very specific about, right now, it's, I believe what it says is no more than three can sit down and, well, I think even informationally, we can sit down and listen to anything, right? I mean, if we want to go, if we want to listen to a proposal, well, I don't know, I, I guess, Dan, all I'm saying is, I'd like to, I'd like to see what your proposal as a guideline for us, that's my whole point.
Anything else, Counselor?
No.
Counselor Levy?
Just two quick things, just on the subject, I, I sent you, or I think I emailed you, maybe I didn't, because I can't remember everything I do anymore, but I think I emailed you right-to-know with email trans, transactions-
Yes.
Okay, that may be something that we might want to just have copied to the, to the council, I didn't want to send it to everybody, I, you know, it, it talks about sequentially sending emails to two and two and two, I think it's pretty clear, so that might be a good thing to just, so everybody can at least see what the law is. The other, the other thing that just came up when I was listening to this, on the conflict of interest, it, it's very clear that it says, "The person so financially interested in such matters or transactions shall not vote, or advise on, or otherwise participate in the town's, in council's consideration of such matter." So, that's what the charter says, so if somebody has an issue with the charter, then we can talk about the charter, but if someone is on a town committee, I mean, I didn't even, even though I was, I had the best price on a TV, I, I ended up donating it to the seniors, because I didn't want it to look like I was doing business, and selling the town anything, so, you know, it's pretty clear that if you're, if you're on a commission, or a committee in the town, if you want to do business with the town, you can go up to that podium and make a presentation to the council, and if the council thinks it's viable, and it goes out to bid, and they're the most, you know, competitive, then that's completely appropriate, but if they're on a committee, and they're, and I'm not saying that's applicable here, I'm talking in general, if they're on a committee, and they're promoting a certain policy, or, or position to take for the town, and they're lobbying the town council, or they're lobbying members, I don't think that's appropriate, in fact, I think it's clear in the charter that they should not be participating in consideration of the matter, so I think it's either one or the other.
You're not saying that's germane right now, though?
No, I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying, if somebody in this town is sitting on a committee, or a council, or anything, a planning board, doesn't matter, board, and they want to do business with the town, that's completely appropriate, they disclose that they're doing business with the town, but I don't think they can, well, I don't think, I think it's pretty clear in the charter, I don't think it's, it's reasonable for them to use that position to direct that policy, and, and if it is directed by them, it shouldn't be, and if they want to promote something to the council or anybody else, that's fine, then we should put it out to bid, if it's, if it's appropriate, if it's something that can be bid, et cetera, and I think that's the way we should, I think we should just follow the charter, I think it says it, so.
Counselor Levy, I cannot agree more.
Okay, so I just leave it at that?
But I do agree with Counselor Zink, that we should not be personalizing policy, and we should, if we, if we're gonna tighten our hands even more around conversations that can be had between counselors and members of the public, we need to codify it somehow, even resolution, or a charter change, or something, so if there's, so gladly have conversations with you about language, we want to, if you, we want to try to get a charter change, or something like that.
Absolutely.
Not that I think it needs to be, but we'll have a conversation. The next meeting, I'm sorry, we have, need approval of non-public minutes, we have three sets, July ninth, and two on July eleventh. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even mean to, there was two other counselors that wanted to talk first, Vice Chair Bentley? No, I'm done. Counselor LeBranche?
I was actually just going to-
Make the motion, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the July ninth, two thousand twelve, non-public minutes.
Motion to second, will there be discussion? If not, Chief could have the vote.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Uh, yes, I, I'm sorry.
Counselor LeBranche?
Aye.
Counselor Zink?
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Counselor LeBranche?
Make a motion to accept the July eleventh, two thousand twelve, non-public minutes, number one.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, Chief could have the vote.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Counselor LeBranche?
Aye.
Counselor Zink?
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Benton?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Counselor LeBranche?
Make a motion to accept the July eleventh, two thousand twelve, number two, non-public minutes.
Motion to second, discussion, Counselor Levy?
There was one very small-
You can make edits to the non-public in-
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I wasn't gonna say, I was gonna say, there was one very small mistake in the July ninth meeting minutes, that's what I was looking for when I, when I was delayed, I don't want to have to, I don't want to throw the whole thing off, but I, there was, it's a very, very small material change, but it's-
Well, you can talk about it in non-public.
Yeah, I just thought I'd mention that, because it's, it's not-
Any discussion about the July eleventh, number two?
That's all I had.
Seeing none, Chief could vote.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Counselor LeBranche?
Aye.
Counselor Zink?
Counselor Carmichael? Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero, the next meeting will be August first, business meeting, counselors, you're gonna hate me for it, but it's early, and we got some time to put in.
Make the motion RSA ninety-one, A three-two-B.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passing unanimously, we are non-public.